I'm going to turn it over to Judith to get us started.
Well, this is sort of a follow-up from a meeting that we had with the committee as a whole a couple of weeks ago and we were beginning to present our idea for the top two initiative expansion and Dr. Postaway thought maybe it would be really a good opportunity to do a brief kind of workshop and you know, you're asking questions and are moving ahead with it or making adjustments and revisions. First of all, let me thank you for your time. I know it's really, it's precious and the issues that you guys are working with are really large and do affect lots and lots of students and this, while this may not affect a lot, affect a lot of students, it does affect some and some are part of the all. So, we're going to take a look at that. In the fall of 2015, Academic Magnet Subcommittee on Diversity and Miss Pinkney and I were both part of that committee, reviewed the issues at Academic Magnet in terms of diversity and the growing loss of African-American students within the student population over about the last six to eight years. Following that meeting, we decided on several things. One was to make sure that everybody knew the application process and it was going online and all of that was working really well. And the initiative that came out of that meeting was the top two initiative where we would offer an invitation to the top two students in every single Charleston County School District 8th grade. And if they met the requirements for eligibility, which is 13 points out of 15 on the Magnet rubric, they would be offered a seat at Academic Magnet High School. And for the 2016-17 school year, we had nine additional students from the top two, seven of which were African-Americans, one Asian and one Hispanic student that came in through the top two process. All of those students are doing well as 10th graders. So, we know that the concept, and your support of the concept, did afford an opportunity for students to take advantage of the educational program at Academic Magnet. Last year, the 2017-18 initiative, we did not have quite as many students from underrepresented populations be admitted to the school.
Do you have any idea why that was today?
Well, I think there were two reasons and one is, and they're both listed in our conversation today. One is that the top two was done after all of the school choice applications were done online. So, people had made commitments and therefore probably not wanting to take advantage of it. So, step one that we're asking for is that we run the top two at the same time that we run the general application process. Because of the way the school calendar falls this year, the top two in each 8th grade will be identified early in January. So, we really can do that. The top two students from every 8th grade are determined by taking a look at their 7th grade and first semester 8th grade weighted GPA for math, science, social studies, and English. And the top two students out of three or four decimal points would be invited to apply. And this year, I would like to add that we would probably be meeting with those, with students and principals so that they really understand the top two and the value of that invitation and encouragement to complete the application process and assistance completing the application process. And the second piece is this. We are advocating for special opportunities for students scoring between 12.00 and 12.99 on the 15-point rubric and inviting them to take part in an academic acceleration program so that they, we could take a look at what kept them from the 13 and it might have been that instead of 85th percentile on their math map, it might have been 82 percentile. It might have been that their writing was, was weak in one area, perhaps organization or perhaps syntax, variety of things. But we feel like that the potholes in their application with the 12.0 to 12.99 are easily and positively addressed through an acceleration program, working with the students individually on their particular area that needs strengthening. And following that, they would be offered a seat at Academic Magnet High School and we would expect that with the academic support that's across the board at Academic Magnet for all students, these students would be quite successful.
So, that would have been the second reason, Mr. Miller, that we looked at the data and realized that a lot of those kids didn't even make that 13. And I'll give you a specific example. We had a scholar that ESL, you know, and English being her second language, really wanted to attend Academic Magnet but of course, her ELA scores, you know, which makes sense, kind of kept her out of there. So...
And I understand, I think it's a great idea. And I've already advocated for this. But we need to walk through what happens when you have two kids at Lang who are number one and two and they get in with a 12.75 and the kid who's ranked number three at Lang has a 12.95 and is disqualified from the waiting list because you're requiring number three, four, and the rest of them to be 13s. I think that can draw an issue. Same thing, and I picked Lang because that's one of the ones that has the highest number of students coming to Academic Magnet. But what happens when the kid number three at Morningside scores higher on the rubric than the number two ranked kid, but neither scored 13 and one gets in and one doesn't?
So, have you guys considered that? You looked at how that might possibly...
Well, you don't get a...
If they score 13, if they score 13, they would be, if they're in the top two, they're one or two and they score 13, they would be given a seat at Academic Magnet High School.
If you don't fly, you don't get a score.
Right. So, but if you're...
Number three wouldn't have a...
Yeah, number three through five, unless they apply to Academic Magnet on their own and get above, or may or may not, then get above a 13, they could be admitted that way.
They could be.
Right, but if they apply and don't get a 13, they're going to be denied while two kids who didn't get a 13 are going to get admitted. And, and let's be serious, the schools that send a lot of kids to Academic Magnet aren't sending four, they're sending 30. So, well below the top two are applying.
Let me ask you guys this. At the middle school level, are students, how do, how are we promoting and encouraging students to apply to Academic Magnet across the board at middle schools? Like Joe, when you were at Morningside, how did you approach or what was your approach to addressing students who you thought should go to, should go to Academic Magnet? How did you, how did you, how did you determine that? Because I think across the board, I don't know if every single middle school is doing the same thing as in terms of recruiting to go. So, there's a big recruitment at Lang and it's not as high at Northwoods Middle or at Sucker, you're going to see a disproportionate numbers of kids because they serve two different populations.
And I think that's what Judith's job is going to be all about.
I mean, I think that's, that's a good point, Mr. Miller, and it would be a little different for me because Judith and I have always had a relationship with looking at, you know, whatever, you know, we felt the weaknesses may have been for the kids at Morningside that didn't get in and forming, you know, relationships where we had mentoring programs, you know, as far as MQ then, different things of that nature. We also had, you know, a couple of gentlemen that came over in, formed a math club, you know, you know, with our kids. So, we've always had those opportunities because we were in such close proximity to Academic Magnet. But as far as district-wide, I do agree with you, we probably need to look at all of our schools and what we do to make that, you know...
But Judith has a plan for that.
What is, what is the interest overall, Michael Techtong, what is the interest overall for African-Americans or students of others that want to attend Academic Magnet? Is it a low mo, low number or is it a high number?
It's a pretty, it's a pretty high number if you ask me. Yeah, it's a pretty high number. I think where the kids...
Can you give me an idea, not today, but later on, can you send me some numbers?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they can get that on. But if I can, I can tell you from my experience just being at Morningside that, you know, the majority of our kids are African-American and I'd say about 75% of our kids that were in our honors program would apply for acceptance of the Academic Magnet.
Well, would apply, but I'm asking you.
Well, that's interesting.
What the interest there?
Well, yeah, because they wanted, they wanted to attend.
Got you.
Let me ask a question. The summer bridge program or session, those kids that score between 12 and 12.99, so if they are selected to attend the bridge session, are they automatically in at the end of the bridge session or it is reevaluated?
I think they would be reevaluated, I think, with the teachers who are working with them and depending on what the area was of weakness. If the area was operational according to math, we would do some sort of assessment there. If it were writing, we would do some sort of assessment there. But we would rely on the teachers and communication with the teachers. With nobody, as an educator, there's nobody at the end of the table who wants to set children up for failure. That is just not our goal. We would want to make sure that they were, that they're ready, that we have supports on all end and that they can be successful. And my thinking is that if we can get, that we did really well a year ago with a number of young people, African-Americans and Hispanic students in the program, they're doing really well and we want to keep that spiral going because, you know, success breeds success and success breeds interest. And I think that if we can show students whose, whose work in their school has been exemplary and it also affirms the school in a sense and their leadership, and I think we can send some really good messages if there's somebody with 12.75 and we plug up the measurement hole in their math test and they come to Magnet and they become successful and they go home and they talk to their families and their friends and it will happen. It's kind of like the young man that graduated from Magnet several years ago, Hispanic fellow, and he went off to Duke and said that the most amazing thing was that his, his whole family and the community saw now that it was possible. Now, they're not all going to Duke, but the idea that it was possible for them, that there was access, I mean, they could apply.
This is also a very hot topic with our own student body. They want a more diverse student body and working with groups like our ambassadors or our Black Student Alliance, they are very excited to be a part of this process, to be a part of this bridge program, to help with tutoring, to help with identifying these students who have the potential but are just that shy and how can we make that possible for them?
And I want that to happen. I completely do. I mean, think where I live, okay? None of my kids are getting in. And, but I think we've got, I haven't heard the answer to the question. We've got to go down a very fine line telling number four, you can't get in by doing the exact same thing number two did.
But they are doing the exact same thing. Their number one, number one and two are ahead of number four. They were exemplary.
Because realistically, if you don't have a 14, you're not getting in.
That's where I was going to go. Where, where, I mean, these kids are, I mean, if you're below a 14.25 or something, I think the whole, our, our grading system is, is not perfect. That's probably a nice way to say it. I, I think it's ridiculous that we give, whether you have an 85th percentile or 99th percentile, you the exact same and that's why we get Dr. so-and-so calling us, starting us with lawsuits.
It's not the kids that are going to get, it's the parents.
Well, so I am a little concerned about dropping the qualifications below 13 because the other kids are scoring over a 14. So, it's, it's a big difference. I would, I'd like to get some, be enlightened a little more on how many kids are we talking about because, I mean, there's the one example of the kid who doesn't speak English or some, or you know, that's not first language, but really, how many kids are we talking about that those make a difference to lower the standards on?
Well, there were, there were...
Six middles at Morningside?
No, no, but some of those kids did fine.
Did, did any of those kids get in? Did they score high enough to get in or did any of those kids score high enough to get on the waitlist?
Well, my boys were the ones that did the math thing at Morningside and we did get, there was a kid who got in. So, it's a...
No, students from Morningside and Sucker, Northwoods, West Ashley Middle Academy, Academic Program have all sent students to Academic Magnet. This is not going to, I mean, got to be realistic, this is not going to open 16 seats for African-American students because there's, right, when I was looking at the list from a year ago, there were like nine students in that 12 points to 12.99 scoring area that would be from schools like Morningside and Northwoods and so forth. But it would be real, I would really, I just think we need to say something about these kids who've worked really hard and have done really well and their school says, you are top-notch for our school. And Academic Magnet is, is designed to be a magnet to attract the brightest and the best from all of our schools.
So, if the top, if the top two, if one of the top two at a school, for whatever reason, was below a 12 on the rubric, we would just say, you don't qualify?
Just like before.
Okay, all right.
And how do we pick the, which schools qualify? Is this going to be our CCSD traditional schools? Is our CCSD Magnet schools? Is it the state or CCSD charter schools? Is it someone who's coming from a private school? What, I mean, where's the cutoff?
It's a CCSD 8th grade.
That means not charter schools.
Not charter, okay.
And Magnet schools are CCSD schools.
The top two thus far has, that's how it's been.
So, basically, the requirement to get in, I know we spent a lot of time, and I mentioned this before, we spent a lot of time on the score on the rubric. So, if Algebra I is one of the prerequisites for admission for Academic Magnet, are we now saying from this day forward that every single middle school in our, in our county will offer, will offer Algebra I? And if so, how will it be offered? Will it be offered online? Will it be in the building? Will they have to go to another school to offer, for it to be offered?
So, let's start at the beginning. How many are not currently offering Algebra I?
So, what we're currently doing is trying to get a roster of where those courses are offered. With me being new to CCSD, I don't have that information with me today, nor do I know it. But Dr. Williams and I have been meeting. We've also been meeting and looking at other options. What are some options besides if we can't get a teacher? We have, and we're going to talk about that when we talk about targeted supports for schools later this afternoon. We have shortages right now in math. There are vacancies.
Every middle school has that, has that platform to want to offer Algebra I and right now, all of them have an Algebra, Algebra I teacher with the exception of one school rich.
So, colloquially, you think there's one out of all of our middle schools that doesn't have Algebra I?
And which one is that? Because I wanted to get that part.
Saint James.
So, there is Algebra I at Northwoods. There is Algebra I at Morningside, the ones we don't think of. So, Saint James Santee isn't offering Algebra I at this point.
But they have a vacancy.
They have a vacancy.
And the reason is because of teacher vacancy.
Yes.
So, are we, so...
No, I teach art.
So, is there anything that we can do at the district level to supplement the fact that they don't have an Algebra I teacher on that campus and there may be students who may deserve an opportunity to attend Academic Magnet, but because they don't have the opportunity to take Algebra I, that can't, that's completely taken off the board? What's our, what's our motive to help those students?
That would not be taken off the board.
That's what I was going to say. It's not required off the board.
If the school does not offer it, if the school does not offer it, and the child is eligible to come to Academic Magnet, we will find a way for them to get algebra at School of the Arts or this year, we even taught, last year, we taught Algebra I at Magnet because we were not going to keep a student, keep access from the students just because their school was not able to offer it.
So, you know what's being denied, but we need Algebra I in there.
Okay.
The math coaches are rotating through and have started picking up a lot of ideas.
And of course, the much bigger question is, this sounds like more of a Band-Aid, that we need to go and help the kids from kindergarten on up so every child can compete on a fair and equitable platform.
That's absolutely what we have to do. But, and I hate to keep asking the same question, but I haven't, I haven't heard what, what, what the plan, you know, legally. I'm just, I think it's a great idea. I'm all for hump, just getting them over the hump. But if, have we walked through the scenarios? I mean, we got sued because someone didn't believe the teacher or we didn't get sued, they threatened to sue us because someone didn't think the teacher did the right grading and that one point was the reason his daughter didn't get in Academic Magnet.
Yeah, when I hear weighted GPA, what does weighted GPA mean?
You're talking about the most emotional, misunderstood educational process, I would venture to say, in the state of South Carolina.
We do. We get, we get the emails from parents and they're very upset.
On top of that, we're going to add something that says, kids here can score lower than kids here. And I, and we just have to walk through that before, before we're sued all over again.
Yeah, examples of what we got were, we got the doctor who was mad that his kid wasn't a genius.
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
Chris, I want that question answered. What, what, is it legal to tell somebody, because you're in the top two and you scored 12.75, we're going to admit you to a school, but because you were number seven ranking and you scored a 12.75, you're not eligible for the waiting list? I, I mean...
Correct. That's what our policy is.
Typically, what I have done in other settings when we had situations like this is to run it through our, our attorney, our legal counsel.
I want to do it. I just don't want it to turn into, and it'll turn into a negative if it scares and upsets more people than it has.
So, Natalie, do you hear that? So, we can get them in front of that and then hold on Todd and Priscilla, but Priscilla's next.
I mean, I'm, obviously, I'm new. Not as new as Cindy, but new here. We have, our mission here is to diversify the student population and we can't diversify the student population if everyone who doesn't get in.
Well, I don't think our mission is to divers, that, this is a, an Academic Magnet High School. It is not a social experiment. We want kids there and we would love to see diversity. We, we can't, I mean, it is the academic school.
I think the factor...
Lowering and lowering and lowering and lowering and lowering.
But to your point though, Academic Magnet has become and is becoming again, a social experiment.
I think that our...
Wait, hold on, wait, wait. Priscilla, have you finished asking your question?
I defer.
All right, well, hold on. Todd had his hand up next and then Kevin and then Michael.
Yeah, my only point is I feel like it's in line with what we approved last year. It's just, it was, it would have had a material effect on nine kids last year, which is significant.
Right, and that just, it's, that's why we're here because the top two initiative came out of a meeting, was affirmed by the Board of Education at 13.0. We're just asking for those young people that, that little bit piece because, because we are not yet, we are working towards it, but we are not yet at a place where every single 8th grade student has had the same experiences. And if, if we can fix the little, I don't know, pop marks in their, in their academic armor, I'm all set for that.
Then sunset it, give them five years.
Kevin?
Whoa. Let's step back for a minute. I hear what Chris is saying, but for many years, Suckin did not allow diversity in that school.
Your hands are full.
For some form, for some form of reason. So, what you're trying to do is to make the playing field a little bit even to kind of bring it around to the 21st century. I don't see where there's a problem trying to diversify if the students meet the criteria or steps to get into the school. These are kids that actually do not have that opportunity in their present school and want to get on a higher playing field. So, we should be able to support them in doing so. So, I don't want to throw a red hair in there, what if we move forward, talk to our legal staff, see what's right and wrong, and to see what happens. I wouldn't try to throw a monkey wrench in this because you think some other parent going to get mad because their child didn't make it. We just have to see how far it goes.
All right, good, all right, Michael?
Okay. I think Cindy's concerns and Chris's concerns are legitimate. I believe that because this is Charleston and because this is the culture that we are in, I can't say that it was Judith's fault or it's going to be the new president's fault, but there's a culture at Magnet that would be adamantly against this, right? And I think for the fact that they may say, well, you're changing the scale to let black kids in and Hispanic kids in, but you're not holding white kids to the same standard, right? So, the same issue that we dealt with with the watermelon situation, right, is that undercurrent that we got to consider. You got African-American kids going to a campus that's predominantly white. Is that a healthy environment for all children, not just African-American kids? So, having a conversation about what the rubric should look like to incentivize some kids who've shown good standing in their school, but under the normal circumstances, what they've been scoring and have been scoring would not allow them the opportunity, afford them the opportunity to get into Magnet. So, what we said, well, you know what, we applaud your work, we applaud what you've been doing, and even though what you've done thus far hasn't gotten you to where you would like to be, which is Magnet, we want to give you a little bit of more support. And in that support, we believe, if given that support, you can be on that campus and you can survive and thrive like every other student. Some people might say, that's a great thing to do, we ought to be doing more of that. But Chris just said, and when Priscilla asked about diversity, Chris said, it's not about diversifying the school. And that's exactly how some people are going to look at this. This is not about diversifying the school. It's about a benchmark that this school district created when they created Academic Magnet. Now, I'm not saying that this was how, I don't know if this is what they thought of when they, when they birthed Academic Magnet into life years ago, but damn it, that's where we are now. So, the question becomes, what do we do at this point to address the low diversity numbers at Magnet that it's fair for the children who are working hard and fair for the children who are going to meet the rubric as it was set? Because when you change the rubric or when you change the criteria to get in, we're going to get pushback and we're all going to get pushback. Some might say, well, Mr. Miller, that's a great idea because you've got kids who went to Hot Gap and last year, those same kids didn't get in and now they can. And you might have some parents from somewhere else, so wait a minute, my kid scored a 13, he's not going to get additional support. So, he can get in. Where is it fairness? Equity and equity and, equity and accountability are two different things. Access and opportunities are two different things. How do we as a board address those four separate topics? That's going to be our charge because Priscilla is right and Chris is right. It is about diversifying our schools because our schools are grossly disproportionate when it comes to diversity. And it is about educating children. And there are some children who don't have that same access and opportunities as other children, even though they're all under the same CCSD umbrella. So, that's a much larger kind of scope of how we need to be looking at this. I'm glad that we've given some opportunities to look at some potential steps moving forward, but I think Cindy's right. We've got to look at the overarching view. We've got to consider what Chris is saying because that's going to play a part. But Priscilla is also correct about the diversity piece.
All right. So, I think that what we'll find from knowing some of the Academic Magnet kids is they will be welcoming to the idea of having diversity. They are furious right now because someone made a decision to, I guess there's foreign exchange students, they just said that they can't be there and they are up in arms. They're saying, you know, that this is a great experience to be with kids of other cultures. And I don't know who came up with that idea, but we ought to reverse it, whatever that is. So, that, there's that issue. Number two, the people who will be upset will be the, the parents that are trying to push their kids in there. My experience on this is it's a lot of times the parents who are the ones who are really wanting their kids to apply as much or more than the kids. So, the question of whether schools are promoting the schools or not, I think that it's really the kind of parents that are doing it versus, you know, this middle school or that middle school. Our experience over in the Mount Pleasant areas, we really felt like kids were kind of pushed towards Wando as the first choice. The other was just kind of an afterthought. Next, this kind of goes back to some of the complaints that we got from parents and this may be a little different from this discussion, but you know, what does weighted GPA mean and does, you know, the GPA or whatever do you come up with for the kids who are applying, does that take into consideration advanced courses or is your math, if you took pre-calculus as an 8th grader, does that get weighed differently from if you just took Algebra I?
If you look at the, South Carolina's weighted graded weighting, weighted grading scale, that's exactly what they did. They took their, for their highest level math, they took their highest level and they look it across. And Honors Algebra I Middle School is weighted the same as Honors Algebra I High School.
Right, so what do you, so even if you took...
Or pre-calculus High School.
Right, so even if you took Algebra I and then you went ahead and took your geometry and you took your Algebra II, you took your pre-calculus, you're going to get the same, you're going to be treated just as if you were an Algebra I kid.
Yeah.
You're not getting, you're not being, looking like, oh, wow, this kid knows what they're doing.
No, they would take the highest math so that they were in Honors Geometry.
Yeah, and it would, they wouldn't consider the fact that they took four extra classes. They'd just say, no, we just take the top one you took.
It's the weighted, it's the weighted one for each of those, the highest level math, English, Science, and Social Studies.
And how are we going to deal with the kids, like I think Cindy referred to, we got a parent who was upset because their kid... We've got a parent that was upset because their kid was a top two, but then they were told, well, you're not top two for this process. You're only top two for our process.
And that's a communication issue.
So last year, we had an issue because a middle school, it was just C.E. Williams, they do, you know, their top two graduates and they have a role in their graduation, but that person wasn't the top two. And I think, can we solve that problem? I mean.
And we did meet with that parent, the C.E. Williams.
And it's, can the C.E.?
I think that we cleared it up at the school level.
Okay. So are they still going to identify their top two?
No.
Okay.
But by moving it, moving it in concert with the regular application thing, that becomes a non-issue.
Yes. Perfect. All right, Chris, did you get all your questions?
Yeah, let's see, one other thing. So the classes, so what, are we talking about like a summer school or what is this?
Yeah. It's in here. Your sessions are in here.
There's a page about there's some spring sessions, after summer sessions, and then finishing up with the summer scholars.
All right, Mike, well, quit telling him to ask more of your questions.
No, I'm not. I'm not. I don't need anybody else to ask my question.
All right. Go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
I think that's it for right now.
This isn't up for approval right now. We're just getting your feedback so that we know how to, to present it to the board when it's, when.
I just don't want to compromise what has been a, I want to get the kids where they honestly compete and they do well, all kids.
And we do too.
Yeah, that's, that's.
This is a group of children, small group, small numbers, that I really think would help on all ends. And it would say to the, all of the schools, we're.
But we know that next year, it'll be, oh, why don't we do top three? And then the next year, why don't we drop it to an eleven?
What if we worked it, I mean, start, if you start thinking earlier, and somebody mentioned this, we've got to start much earlier with these kids in eighth grade. What if we start, and we identify the top two at sixth grade, at seventh grade, and we put them through a battery of tests, you know, how would they do? How would they qualify? What are the weaknesses? So by the time they do get to eighth grade to apply?
They're at 13.
Then you don't have to worry about this again.
All right. Hold on, you guys. Wait. Cindy is next, and then Michael.
Okay. Again, even against my own North Charleston board members, I voted to build and fund and staff North Charleston Creative Arts Elementary Schools, specifically because I wanted children in North Charleston exposed to arts to have a shot at SOA. Even Reverend Collins voted against that. So there's no denying that I have always supported anything that will get our North Charleston kids up on the same playing field. My votes, my votes reflect that, not just my rhetoric. But we have to talk about the truth here and separate it from the emotion here. And Kevin, you did not say a correct statement, just so we can clarify. Before y'all got on the board, we created something that said, if you are in the top two in the eighth grade and you qualify for Academic Magnet, we're going to put you at the top of the waiting list and you get in automatically. That's there. We're not talking about, what you said, Kevin, was trying to make it a fair playing field where they meet the criteria. The suggestion now is to not make them meet the criteria to apply to get into Academic Magnet.
Or to help them to meet the criteria.
So I want to say that that, what's, what's being proposed isn't that they meet the criteria. It's that if they are 1, 2, .01 below the criteria, we let them take some processes to get in. We need to be clear on that.
Right. We, we help them to qualify.
I didn't say we didn't. I said, we need to be clear on that. I'm not opposed to it, but we need to be clear. So then I think the question becomes, do we have to talk about, is the benchmark patently exclusionary? You know, if we're talking about changing the benchmark to say, students who can't meet the benchmark with some supports can be successful academic high students, then we have to talk about, why is the benchmark excluding those students?
So I, I see it differently than that. I see it that you're saying, we're, with some supports, we're going to get these kids to the benchmark before school starts. That is the whole point. If they don't get to, if they don't get to that benchmark, then they don't.
That's, no, that's not it. It says, it does not say that they're going to take the test again and score 13 on the rubric. It says, by the conclusion of the summer session, students must demonstrate academic skills, desire, and motivation that are likely to lead to success. I'm not saying that's wrong, but we've got to talk about what's really on the table. It's not retesting them at the end of this program. It's saying, so I'm not opposed to any of that. That's not it, but we just have to make sure we're talking about fact. These are two people who are one and two. I am not. We're talking about people who are one and two, who score below qualification, who will get into Academic Magnet High School. And we've got children three through 642 who score 12.99 and are told they don't get an opportunity. I just want to make sure we're doing it fair and legal. And the real way to solve this problem is, is the benchmark patently exclusionary?
Let Judith answer that, and Todd.
The, I can say, answer two questions. One is, I think that we can put together a statement at the end of the achievement, academic acceleration that will make it, that will help everybody understand where we expect these students to be.
Fantastic.
That's easy. The second question is, the answer is yes. There are things out there that we are going to be recommending for the board to look at in terms of what we need to do as a district to, I guess, afford more students' opportunity for access to Magnet programs, not just Academic Magnet, but the Arts and all, Military Magnet, Garrett, if that stays. We need, we need plans to do that.
I need my science at elementary school in North Charleston. I got Jerry Zucker. Why ain't I got a science school?
No, we need, and that's part of the redesign pieces. It's not what we're prepared to challenge you with this morning.
I think we solved the most immediate problem. If you're saying that the students have to participate in this and it has to have an effect on their rubric.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I just have to figure out how to say that.
But then we still have to go to the bigger question of, why did we have to go through all this just to get the students in? Is the rubric patently exclusionary? Or do we need to buff up education so all our kids hit 13?
And part of the school choice charge is, is the admissions, which will come to you shortly.
Okay, hold on. Michael, Todd, then Kevin.
Okay, I think Judith touched on it a little bit. Number one, my question is, can you guys let us know of the students who come into Academic Magnet and they score 14 or better on the rubric? Can you tell us how many of those eighth graders took ninth grade courses in eighth grade? One. Number two, I think the point is, if, if students in middle schools have opportunities, oh, like I found my point. The test that's given for Academic Magnet, is that based on a ninth grade or an eighth grade? Or how is that defined? The reason why I ask is because you're asking them to have algebra coming in, right? Which would tell me that there must be something about that test that's focused along the ninth grade reading, ninth grade curriculum.
Explain the admissions process.
The math test. It's the same test everyone takes.
But certainly, if you've had Algebra One in eighth grade, you're going to score at a higher percentile on the math.
So if you take in, if you take in ninth grade English and eighth grade, if you take in Algebra One and Geometry in eighth grade, and a history course in eighth grade, then you take a math test for your eighth grade year, you have a distinct advantage. So my question then becomes, how can we provide more of those opportunities at every middle school?
There you go. Which really.
That's students next in the next, next conversation.
Well, why do we have to, why are the only students getting in having to take high school programs in the eighth grade in order to get into a high school?
In order to score a 14 or better on the rubric.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. That, that question you're asking is the next piece that Judith wants to talk to us about. So Todd, do you have?
My only point is just putting it in perspective. We're talking about nine kids that it would have affected last year. We've got, so let's say that rolls out for the next four years in a row, 36 kids total we're talking about. And we've got over 40 that are out-of-county kids at Academic Magnet. So this is just.
Are you paying your witness?
Okay. All right, Kevin?
Yeah.
Did you pass him? Okay. All right, let's, let.
And I do, I want to add one, one thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Keep it in consideration. We are talking about the nine kids. We don't want to take away from our traditional home schools either. That's, if we can't make it such a thing that we're trying to grab all the, and that may have been where I've had the experience, where I felt like my kid's home school was giving a disincentive, don't apply there. Now you got, you want, because we really don't want kid, people to think that you have to go to this school or you are not going to get something. We want to make sure that every kid gets a good education no matter where you are. Yeah.
Okay. I agree. Okay.
I agree.
Right.
So, all right, so you've given us this concept and we, I've asked Natalie to give us some advice before we vote on it. Now, next, next step.
Well, then, the next piece was just our first steps as far as the challenge to redesign, I hate that word, but to look at the Magnet Choice Program for the entire district. And the first step that we would like to do is to take a close look at all the partial magnets and examine the efficacy of all of these programs and bring back to you a recommendation. The first two steps of the recommendation that we can bring forward, not necessarily a vote today, but at the next COTW meeting, is to categorize all of our Montessori's as constituent magnets. Because we do have one now in every constituent district. And that would be an easy step to take.
And we have one in every constituent district?
Not in everyone, but they serve each one.
I was supposed to get ready to say. We don't have one in three, nine, 10, 4, 1, 2, and 3, every constituent district. But we have already created that you don't have to have a constituent. Just be careful that we created an attendance zone that wrapped every kid so they're able to attend a Montessori school. If you make it a constituent magnet, you're excluded. Right. We've got to be real careful about that.
If you make it a constituent magnet for three and nine, then you are okay.
Right. We might have some doubles.
Yes.
Community Montessori is currently two, so that kind of model.
Okay.
And then one of the other things that we are thinking, but this is just so that you can begin to see our thinking. We would like to establish constituent magnets for also elementary school integrated arts. And we have, North Charleston Creative Arts is a partial magnet. If it were shifted to a constituent magnet.
Even Paul's twins can get in then. Open up the seats. Yeah. I think it's not fair that North Charleston has to share their, their art school with the entire county while the other art school does not have to share theirs with the entire county.
Those first two steps, I think, are logical. And we will bring them as a recommendation to you at the, for the next COTW.
Okay.
But that's where we're thinking. Down the line, we're thinking a lot about preparing kids all over the county for access to whatever Magnet-like opportunity or neighborhood high school program they want to pursue and to prepare them for that. And we are looking also at the admissions pieces. With hopefully a goal to say, there's more than one way to skin a cat. There should be more than one way to get into Magnet schools.
But also, I think we need to be very careful about our quest to constantly provide choice. Because I think, I don't know where it stops.
Yeah. There's a tipping point. And we're on the other side of it already.
I think we need to be very careful about options because options can be good for some, but at the end of the day, it might be detrimental for potentially all, to Chris's point. If Magnet is taking the top percent of kids off the top of every school, middle school, and they go there, and then SOA takes the artsy kids, and then Academic Magnet takes the military students, and then our traditional schools are left with our traditional students. And then we see the fluctuation in the numbers. And then the mindset then becomes, the only way for my kid to get a good education is they have to go to one of our Magnet schools, which is something that the district created years ago about this whole school choice initiative.
Right. So we've created our own Montessori.
Oh, yeah. And it is past the tipping point.
Well, I mean, I see it differently. Because if we have all the options within the district, each constituent district, then there's not a need so much so that the high advanced kids will want to go to SOA or Academic Magnet because we offer the choices right within our constituent district.
Yeah, but what, what Michael's saying is if every area has a math, math Magnet school for elementary children.
They should be at the home school.
Right.
What about the other nine elementary schools in that area that don't get to have a math Magnet teacher?
Well, again, we're talking about choice options. So, so if we have a Montessori, we have a math themed concept, or we have an engineering school themed concept. We're talking about choices within the constituent district where kids don't have to go to 23 or to 10 or to 4. They can stay right within nine because there are choice options. And it goes, it, you know, it just goes.
I totally agree with that. I think though, in my, in my term on the board, we've had a communications Magnet school. I thought that's what we taught. We had a, we had a, an organization based on the Stephen Covey Magnet School and Arts Magnet School and Science Magnet School and then a STEM Magnet School. It's not that we shouldn't have some Magnet options, but how many? Do we need a communications English Magnet School in seven different constituent districts?
And don't forget, we're spending close to $3 million a year transporting students.
I need to record three, find what the magnets are and then have them in our neighborhood school.
I, an idea that I've heard Judith talk about is that.
But he's a great talker.
That Judith talked about is that we need to be increasing the rigor at all of our schools. And instead of necessarily having all these choices, perhaps, perhaps in middle, you know, high elementary schools, so fourth or fifth grade, and then in middle school, we're exposing kids across the board to arts, high academics, leadership, military. Right. So then that way, all of our schools, if a student gets that exposure and maybe they decide to go to school of the arts, but if they don't and they go to their home high school, then that just builds that art program there. So I think, yeah, I think that's what we're trying to get. Okay. Any other questions for, for our Magnet team here? So you're bringing the, the top two to us at the October board meeting, right?
If we can.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Okay. Any other questions? Michael, Kevin, y'all have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
I just want that information.
Write it down.
Right. Do, do you get what information he wanted? Okay. Okay. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.